Sweet, I'll just keep notes.
You've been doing a lot of notes.
We'll give you a break.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Alright, everyone ready? It's thirty. I'd like to welcome everyone to the London City Council meeting. If you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll have our roll call, Mr. Eads.
Mr. Eads is here.
Alright, Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Mr. Hitt?
Here.
And Mr. Stahl?
Present.
See everyone, and I sent a copy of the minutes from our last meeting. Have you all had a chance to take a look at those minutes? Alright, any changes or corrections, discussion? Alright, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Alright, we do not have any public hearings this evening. Onto our communications and announcements. First, we have a request for an appointment from the mayor, and he wants to speak on that.
Yeah, before we get into it, so, as you guys, I'll let you explain a little bit about Madison County Public Health. So, as the mayor for the city of London, I get to appoint one board member to that board, and then I also sit on the officiating board that appoints the rest of the members. For quite a while now, Teresa Ames has been our representative. She reached out and said that she appreciates her time, and, but she was not going to ask to be reappointed for the next term. So, before we get started with that, I want to thank Teresa for all she did for the city of London. Madison County Public Health Board was not very well-known about three years ago. And then if you guys remember what happened almost three years to the day, Madison County Public Health Board became very important to the city of London, as well as Madison County. So, for what she was able to do, and, you know, maybe some of the backlash, or, and even the pats on the back that she got for what they did during the pandemic, I want to thank her for that time, because it really seemed to kind of be a much more easier job until COVID hit, and then it really turned into a tough job for that board out there. So, I want to thank her for her service to the city of London and everything that she did on Madison County Public Health Board. With that being said, I'm bringing this to you today to get approval from you guys for my appointment. But then, after this approval, it will go to Madison County Public Health Board itself, or the, the members who, I'm sorry, who picked the board members. And that meeting is on the thirteenth. So, I wanted to get approval from this board, so when I, or this council, so when I go to the governing board out there, I can say that London City Council has approved them upon your approval. So, that's what I'm asking for today.
Okay.
And it's Dana Fisher, and I think everybody knows who Dana is from Everly Fisher Funeral Home.
Alright, all in favor of approving the appointment to the Madison County Board of Health, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, oppose, same sign. Thank you. Next, we have a request here. I know the council has been without a clerk for a couple of meetings. So, now we have a new person that's interested in being our city council clerk, and that is Christina Miller. She's here with us this evening, and she's just sitting there practicing with some notes there. So, everyone, this is Christina Miller, and I have passed out a copy of her resume, which is quite impressive. And she is eager to begin as our council clerk, if we so approve. Christina, would you like to have anything to say? We do have the podium there, you can use that with the microphone, so that way we can hear you on the recording.
Oh, great. No, I'm glad to do, to be here. I am glad to have the opportunity to serve all of you and serve the community. I'm pretty, I'm very excited about it. I love being involved with the government, so, as you can see from my resume, I have extensive experience in committees, actually being committee members and whatnot. So, this will be a different role for me, but I still enjoy it, and I know I'll have fun seeing my talent grow. Thank you.
Have any questions? Well, all in favor of approving Christina Miller as our new London City Council Clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, oppose, same sign. Alright, we'll welcome Christina.
Congratulations.
And I go by Chris.
Chris, okay. Goes by Chris. Thank you. Onto our audience concerns. First, we have Raymond Anthony. And if you could, please state your name, address. You have five minutes, if you could make sure the microphone is on. I think I did turn that on. It may not be on. Is it on?
Is it on?
Oh, it is.
Yeah, it's on.
Alright, thank you.
My name is Raymond Anthony, I reside at 521 Eaton. First, I have a question. Recently, or a couple of years ago, the city of London planted some young saplings along Lafayette Street in front of the Dairy Queen and Urgent Care. For some reason, I went by there the other day and saw they were all gone. Can you tell me what happened to those saplings?
Rex Castle?
Yeah, I can now. We found out after we put them in, that there's a, a main water line down through there, and the city at, the water department asked us to move them. So, they went down to Merrimack Park.
Okay, so they were removed and went somewhere else?
Yeah, it was all moved. And then the, some other ones downtown, down by the school, we had to move a few trees. Somehow, with those high tension wires, even though these cherry trees were planted, they only got about twenty foot tall, nothing's allowed under it at all, we had to move, and they also went down to Merrimack Park, too.
Okay, thank you. My other comment is, last fall, as I drove through that same area, across from Urgent Care, Bob Evans, I saw a city of London dump truck with a couple guys picking up trash along that fence row. I don't know if that's a common thing that the city of London does. Is it? And if not, I'd like to know why, because that's a very unsightly area. I go by there all the time, and if you drive towards Columbus or into Columbus, you'll see the exact same thing. And I just think with the amount of travel that comes in and out of London through that area, it'd be nice if the city of London, if they don't do it already, to somehow delegate some city workers to, on a regular basis, pick up that trash along that fence row there. Because I don't want to see that, because I see enough when I go into Columbus and see all the trash.
It's, it's already been done. They do go out there and they, they pick up trash. It's actually in the report that he gave yesterday, they do have their employees go around and pick up trash. I mean, the biggest thing is to urge everyone not to litter as well, so.
Well, I don't think people that drive by litter, I don't know where it comes from. But it's been a nice source for a long time, and can you tell me how often they go out there and pick up that trash? Because I was by there yesterday, and it's pretty bad again.
Is it?
Yeah, I don't think that it's a regular scheduled thing. That department has a lot of duties and are usually very busy, because they take care of stormwater drains and street, and they do mowing, they're part-time people. So, if they get a lull, I think it's when he tries to take care of those. So, I don't think it's on a regular scheduled thing, it's just whenever schedules allow.
And on, on top of that, we've had a couple times since I've become mayor, some people have reached out to us about community days and doing some stuff about community days, and we outfit them, and that was always one of the projects that we've done. Take a police officer out there to get the lights going, because it's private citizens, as well as the street department, and we work with citizens and try to get that all cleaned up.
Okay, what, what again, is what, what department oversees that?
So, the street department is who, they're the ones that, they were talking about, just went out and did some.
Alright, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know in some cities, we've seen, I've seen where they have like, you know, sections of street where you can adopt it, different groups in town adopt a certain street and make it their duty to keep it clean. I've seen that as well. So, that may be something that maybe some of the community organizations or groups could help out with as well.
Most of that trash comes out of Walmart parking lot and the next parking lot over. I've, and we get a windstorm, that's when it seems to show up, after a big windstorm, it's just like.
It cleans the parking lot out.
Right, and there's a fence there, so it naturally holds everything.
Yeah, Walmart got a new manager out there, and they reached out, and he came in and had a meeting with me, and he, he said that they wanted to be better partners with the community, and that's what they could do. And number one thing I said was, you know, if you could do a cleanup day every once in a while and send your employees out there to pick up all that trash, that would be the number one thing I would ask you to do for this community. So, we'll see if that happens.
Alright, and next we have Tommy Boyd. Alright, state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please.
Thank you, good evening. Tommy Boyd, forty-eight North Union Street. Just two things tonight. The first one, I did forget to write down, I'm sorry about that. But we talked at the last one about Kenny Boulevard with the new apartments coming in, and if that street did need re-stripped. It does look like we're going to need to. Do we have any idea what that will actually cost?
Rex, you know any details on that?
No, I haven't really researched that. But we do have, you know, funds available to do striping. So, you know, that, that is our plan, if that goes in there, we're going to have to do something for turn lanes, so.
Shouldn't be.
That's in the plans. I don't know that it's going to be this year, it'll probably be next year's budget.
Alright, thank you. The other one is having to do with the trash ordinance that is requiring businesses in town to use London as a trash removal company. Do we know if there's other cities that are, or have this ordinance? I've kind of been looking into it around, and there's a lot of cities that offer, hey, you can find different competitors, they might have a set competitor's price for a primary removal service. But I was just seeing if there was anywhere else that we were kind of seeing this ordinance that says you must use our trash removal system.
I don't think there is.
Okay. And I mean, it is, yeah, nineteen eighty is when we put the thing in there, nineteen eighty-five is when we made the amendment to actually allow different companies to use other ones, because we couldn't provide the service. To go with it next would be, their contracts do end on December thirty-first. Would we allow them to keep those contracts going until the end of the year for using the supplier they have now? Or would we be looking into just trying to end contracts that are there?
I'm going to speak for the BPU. I've not really discussed it with them, I have my own viewpoints. We have it in there that we're a closed city, that we don't want anybody else in here, but like you said, we didn't have trucks that was able to handle that. So, we allowed them in there, and part of that process was that they were supposed to pay a registration fee to be able to do that. The ones that have honored and done what they're supposed to do, I would say that they would be allowed to continue. The ones that haven't would probably not be allowed to. Because they're, according to our codified ordinances, they're illegally coming in here and picking up trash because they've not registered with the city. We've reached out to them, they've kind of just, kind of ignored us.
And it's not that they've registered for maybe one client, but not their other clients, is it? Because.
It's, I, I don't know that it's per client, I think it's per company.
It is per client. It's three hundred dollars per client. And so, I'm kind of surprised they can even find something cheaper that's coming in for three hundred dollars per client a year. And so, I mean, other places I'm seeing two hundred dollars a year, you know, for just being able to do service within the town. And so, I was just kind of seeing if we can look into maybe backing off of that one, or seeing what we can do, because there's something about it that seems a little.
Well, a- again, it is, it's jurisdiction of the BPU. It is lost revenues, and that's what we want to be able to continue to try to bring in, to keep our rates lower, so.
And I, that's kind of also where my point is of, if we're picking up twenty-nine more companies because of this, we're going to have larger truck maintenance. Having more truck maintenance, more airs like that, is less service to the people of the city also. You know, we're even asking to clean up streets and seeing if we could get some extra people out there, that's another.
That's not the department he was talking about, or that we were talking about.
I get you, but within sanitation, you know, they could probably help with that. And so, I'm just saying, this would take up more time than probably what we need to be doing for, for just a couple extra bucks. Main thing also looking into is with the antitrust laws. A little excerpt from that is kind of what I'd like to say. For over a hundred years, the antitrust laws have had the same basic objective, to protect the process of competition for the benefit of consumers, making sure there are strong incentives for businesses to operate efficiently, keep prices down, and keep quality up. I believe it's a big thing to uphold. So, within federal laws of ours, hopefully we can see that, it's something we can back off of. That is all for me.
Onto our committee reports, again, Mr. Stahl.
Nothing's happened since last meeting, but we have a finance meeting next Monday, and then service meeting will be the next Monday after that.
Alright, thank you. And Mr. Hitt?
Nothing new. Our safety committee meeting is the fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
Five o'clock in the meeting room over here.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Yes, I attended the Board of Public Utilities meeting on February twenty-third. I'm going to read an excerpt of some of the minutes that I have here. We had a citizen's concern, a citizen addressed the board regarding water connection at his property located on North Oak Street. Mr. LaLannek stated that the information was given to that gentleman's contractor regarding this issue, and it was determined that it is the responsibility of the owner to pay for the supply line, as well as the tap fees related to this particular connection. Recommended that he and water superintendent have a meeting with the city solicitor to kind of iron out some of the details on this. Another citizen's concern addressed the board regarding trash pickup within the city. Questioned why commercial dumpster rates were not increased when residential rates were increased, why we are not picking up all the commercial dumpsters as we are a closed city. Sanitation superintendent stated that he does not feel that we can service all the commercial accounts at this time. Some commercial businesses do not have dumpsters that we can service. Superintendent stated that the older trucks are routinely breaking down, new trucks are on the road all the time. Chairman Vest recommends that we move forward with collecting all commercial accounts. Recommended that the sanitation superintendent personally speak to each commercial business and let them know that we are a closed city, and that we will be moving forward with requiring them to have their trash collected by the city sanitation department. Also, a motion was brought up to enforce city ordinance of us being a closed city for the purpose of trash removal, beginning July first, twenty twenty-three. That motion was second, and motion was carried. Board requests that sanitation superintendent email cost of dumpsters to the board members by the next board meeting, including Mayor Klauser and Carol Benedict, to his utilities director. Motion to move forward with collecting past due fees with the city solicitor as far as the trash is concerned. There was a second, and that motion was carried also. Moving on to the water department. Engineering has started at the water plant, currently working on the two wells that have ammonia. It's going to take approximately fifteen months to develop the new well. With the two wells that we're working on right now, we should have water coming out of them. Hopefully, by the end of the year, we're thinking possibly in October. Water superintendent will be working closely with the engineers. His daily schedule is going to be changing to accommodate this project. One of the board members stated he'd like to have a monthly count of how many cellular meters have been installed on ongoing basis. Waste water department, the screw press, Doll Lehman is the contractor. They will expend the funds available once the press is installed, anticipating to start probably in June of twenty twenty-four. And this will free up one employee daily, once the new press is up and running. We also talked about our back truck, which is in okay shape for the age of the truck. Timeframe to get a new back truck, probably sometime next year. Approximate cost, two hundred thousand. New sewer pipe being installed this week on McNeil Court, three hundred pipe, three hundred feet of pipe, eight inch pipe. Mr. Duncan, who is the wastewater department superintendent, wanted to thank Bill Long's department. Both departments work well together, no issues. Moving along to the sanitation department. We had a accident on a narrow street. Recommendation for the superintendent to be present to help guide the driver when they are required to back down narrow streets. Superintendent stated he can implement this procedure right away. There was a question of, are we estimating the bills for the month of March? Would rather not if we don't have to. And the board agreed best to read the meters, so the meters will be read. Next thing that came up was talking about valve cellular meters. I'd like to get one hundred ordered. Purpose of is duplex properties that share one curb stop, downtown apartments access only through businesses downstairs. Also, several apartment buildings that meters are located inside, and the entire building shares a curb stop. The board agreed, water superintendent will order one hundred valve cellular metals, meters. Board agreed to give credits for sewer portion of bills due to leaks and frozen pipes over the winter, and several sewer accounts have already been credited. There was a question regarding hose bibs, how many we had on hand. Approximately thirty-five. It's recommended that we order more hose bibs, so there will be fifty new hose bibs ordered. And so, I got.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Alright, I attended public service last night. I'll go over the Parks and Rec information. He brought up the swimming pool, Coleman and Sons Painting LLC, they're abrasive blasting all five pools right now. They will also be doing the painting. The main pool and the baby pool are almost done within the next couple of weeks. As long as everything's going with the repairs and the blasting and the painting, everything should be done before we start. Opening day will be the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. They're looking to hire seven to ten lifeguards for the season. They have eight or nine returning. They're also looking for one to two rec assistants. They're looking for help on the front desk and concessions. They'll start taking applications in the middle of March. They do have a lifeguard training class for anyone who hasn't got their certification, certification, sorry, on their own from May thirtieth to June first. Winter basketball numbers finally wrapped up. They had total revenues of thirty-seven thousand eight seventy-one. Their total expenses were sixteen thousand six seventy-three, equalling twenty-one thousand one ninety-eight in profits. Spring volleyball, they had a hundred registrations. They're down fourteen from the previous year. One of the main concerns that people reached out to, landing about why they didn't sign up was the later start. It's starting to run into softball, and they didn't know what dates practices were going to be on, and they didn't want to make the commitment. Games and practices will be in the London Elementary Wood Gym. Player evaluations will be March sixth. The first game is March twenty-ninth, and the end of the season tournament will start May first, sorry. The recreation surplus from the community center, they will be going on to GovDeals, GovDeals.com on March thirteenth. They'll be auctioned off. The auction will run for ten days. A couple of the items that'll be auctioned off are a pair of basketball hoops with electronic height adjusters, electric hoists and remotes, two pair of basketball hoops with height adjusters, and then the Nethco scoreboards with controllers, and miscellaneous padding walls from the walls, stage and railing. He also brought up ball diamonds, to try to get the three ball diamonds that we have in the city, two at Merrimack, the two softball fields, and the one down at Park Avenue. They got a bid from this company, they gave two different bids of, do we go down one inch on the fields and refill it, or go down two inches? We mo- made a motion to move it to finance for the two inch. It's about a twenty-two thousand dollar difference. The idea was, we don't want, the whole reason for going down two inches is to make sure they get all the roots up from the field, make sure it doesn't come back and have to spend money later down the road. The guy said, that did the quote, said this was a better plan. So, it will be in finance in front of you guys, because they will need a little help from the general fund. The next public service meeting will be April fifth at six P M.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Peters?
Onto the street department, some stuff they've been doing. They've been working on equipment, they've replaced signs around the town, worked on traffic cameras, replaced a guard rail there on Lafayette Street. The one ton truck that was in an accident this past winter, insurance company has totaled that, so we'll probably be replacing it here shortly. Been picking up trash around the town. They met with Ohio Edison about street lights along Lafayette Street and, as well as High Street. They're along Past Kenny. They also reported street lights out to Ohio Edison. Bill also let us know that he has been calling the railroad company about the tracks weekly. They had to rebuild and replace the school sign there on Elm Street that was knocked down, and they also been helping out with the, a little bit with the demolition over here. That's all I have for the street department. And as John stated, next finance meeting will be March sixth at six P M.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Eads?
Well, I attended the same meeting as these last two gentlemen, and I, I only wanted to add one thing to that, to counsel and stall. When they, when Mr. Peters just mentioned the lights, talking to Edison about the lights on high in Lafayette, that was specifically talking about what you brought up in the last meeting about it being dark out there. So, they do have their engineers looking at that to possibly put more lights in.
Alright, thank you. Onto our city official reports.
Alright, appreciate it. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. Appreciate city council with the passage of the fireworks money. At the last council meeting, I did enter into contract, so we will be having our fireworks display for the city of London on Monday, July third at dusk. So, just a little heads up on that, so go ahead and put it on the calendar. It'll be once again out at the school, and be let off where they've been let off for quite a few years now. I met with a representative from a development company that's possibly looking to bring condominiums or apartments to London. We had a very in-depth conversation, and it sounds like he's really leaning towards taking condominiums back to his company and talking to them about that. I met with developers about three properties in downtown London, which is twenty-two. I met with a representative from a development company that's possibly looking to bring condominiums or apartments to London. We had a very in-depth conversation and it sounds like he's really leaning towards taking condominiums back to his company and talking to them about that. I met with developers about three properties in downtown London, which is 22, 106 to 114 and 116 to 122 South Main Street. They are looking to buy the properties and rehab them to help bring in new businesses and new life into the downtown. They are a very community oriented company wanting the best for London. And they're also in contact with the Chamber of Commerce to try to do some surveys to see what people would like to see in the downtown area. Their plan is to come in and start working on the facade and the bottom levels to get those ready so they can start renting and then start working their way up. But the initial thing they'll do is the facade and they talked about, one of the main things that they come in and try to do right away is get all the windows replaced. So hopefully, driving down South Main Street instead of pieces of wood from 1985 that are painted brick red, there will be some nice beautiful windows going all the way up those old buildings. The meeting went fantastic, they seem like a very good group. In the past, we've had companies come in and they kind of just tell you what you want to hear, but these guys come with receipts. They've done this multiple times, they've done it in Bell Fountain, Old Hilliard, Plain City, and this is their next project, so very exciting for that. Spoke with representatives from the Madison County Parks and Trails. They're continuing their effort to get the old set of train tracks abandoned so they connect that bike trail. We know we've been working on this for a while. We now have a little bit of a partnership, well, we've always had a partnership, but the partnership between the city of London, Madison County and the Friends of Madison County Parks and Trails are trying to work with Armley. To, they're kind of the last write-off, it's who they need to be the ones to kind of write it off and say, okay, we can go ahead and abandon it, so we're working with Armley right now, but seems like we're making some real good strides. So hopefully, we'll be able to get that accomplished. I sent you guys some emails, so we talked about, I met with the city law director about railroad speed limits. And we know what happened here in Ohio and it kind of made us want to take a look at our local ordinances on railroad speed. And then we came to the understanding that the city currently does not have laws on the speeds in which trains can travel through the city. So we're hopefully going to be talking about that at the safety service committee meeting. I'm still gathering information, we're starting to radar some of the trains coming through town so we can have some kind of a base point on what's going on. And how fast they're coming through town. And then we can kind of talk with, you guys are looking to do this, at what kind of speed we want to set. The ORC really doesn't have us, give us a lot of teeth on what we can do with this. But I think at least just putting it in place and trying to get them to slow down a little bit will hopefully help out and maybe not have a disaster that was over there in that area in Ohio. So, there's a lot of things and I hope you guys really look into this and really think about it. You know, there's good and bad. One is it'll slow trains down, but when you slow trains down, then the longer it takes for trains to get through town, right? So, you know, there's a lot of pros and cons we need to weigh when thinking about this. If anyone has any ideas or suggestions before safety and wants to meet with me and talk, I'd love to, but I'm on a fact finding mission right now and just gathering information on that. I did have a lunch meeting with representative from Governor DeWine's office, Attorney General Dave Yost's office and US Representative Mike Carey's office. The discussion really focused on the proposed increase to the local government fund, state and federal grants and our local police department and their current facility. Mike Carey's office came and went through the police department and their representative for safety services and veterans was with them and wanted to take a look at our police department. And then with the, what I sent you guys about the local government fund, the local government fund was reduced in in 2011 by 50% during K6's administration. And that went from 3.68% of the general revenue funds to its current level at 1.66%. So the past Ohio general assemblies have repeatedly decreased funding and revenue sharing in the recent years in addition to significantly reducing the local government fund. The sudden revenue loss has made it increasingly difficult, especially for us to help our continued efforts to rebuild our infrastructure. As you guys know, during my administration, that's where we tried to earmark some of that money. And even when I was on council, we kind of always set that money aside to pave roads and work on our infrastructure and that money just keeps dwindling. So as you guys know, I sent you guys some proposed legislation. And all it is is saying, hey, we feel that you guys should reinstate this local government fund back to its original percentage of 3.68%. Ohio Municipal League is really behind this and they're really pushing and lobbying to get this done. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to talk to you about that. We'll bring more information on that issue to the finance committee meeting on Monday. Rich touched on this a little bit, but I want to give you a little more information. So I did have a meeting with Steve Alonick from the Board of Public Utilities and Rex, Carol Benedict and TJ Rice, our water superintendent, about the installation of the new cellular water meters. So currently, the water department has installed about 1,800 water meters, but we still have to install around 2,000 more. So we're about halfway done, but we want to put a good, strong plan together to get the rest of the remaining cellular water meters installed. So they are finalizing a plan right now and our goal is to have all the meters installed and have that project completed by September 1st. Some of the meter, one of the issues are some people's water meters are in their house. So when they're in someone's house, we have to facilitate a time to come and switch those meters out. Also, that ties up two guys. Anytime that we enter someone's home, we always like to have two guys, we don't want just one guy going into someone's home. So we're now going to start working with our local residents and citizens to send out information to try to start setting those times up where we can get in there and switch those meters over to the cellular meters. As you guys know, the cellular meters are really going to help everybody out. They can detect leaks very, very fast. So if all of a sudden somebody's using a large amount of water in a short amount of time, sometimes it would just be flooding their basement or in their crawl space and they don't know what's happening. Well, we will get alerted right away when that large usage starts happening and we can send somebody out to take a look at it, which could really save somebody's home in a way. And then also, it just makes our billing a lot more accurate. So it's just being more efficient in the department and using technology to be more efficient. And then with that being said, it also frees up employees, because we go around right now and we're reading meters by hand. So that takes, you know, a couple of weeks to do per month. We could have those guys out there starting to do water detection leaks in the ground, start working more on our infrastructure and start helping out the things that that we haven't been able to put all of our focus on. So once we get all these meters installed, it's really going to help the city as a whole to be able to get those guys out doing other jobs than just walking around reading meters. Now on to the fun fact, which is the number 10. I'm teaching 10 total classes this week for junior achievement. It's actually two classes, but 10 hour-long sessions. So I began teaching those junior achievement classes this past Monday. Had the honor of being invited into St. Patrick's School to teach junior achievement to Ms. McDavid's first grade class and Mrs. Holloway's second grade class. It's always great that we're able to give back to the community and especially for me, whenever I can give back to the kids and go in there and teach those guys and just have a lot of fun. So the week-long classes will conclude tomorrow. And as always, if anyone is ever looking to volunteer time and they're always looking for more teachers for junior achievement, please reach out to Junior Achievement of the Mad River Region. So that is all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, just one question for you. You said that there's a company that wanted to come in to bring businesses to the downtown?
Yes.
London?
They're developers, they're going to rehab the buildings and then try to get businesses in.
Okay, and they find out what the people in your community want?
So they asked for me to link them up with the Chamber of Commerce because they want to start sending out surveys of, hey, what businesses do you want to see downtown, right? What do you want to see in your neighborhood down there? So they're just very, very community oriented and then that's who they'll go out and headhunt to try to get into those businesses.
All right. Well, they have access to the information from the Historic Review Board, Downtown Review Board. They did like a study to look, find businesses.
Yep.
That were in our downtown, because they did an extensive study in the whole.
Yep, we talked about that. We talked about, anytime somebody comes to buy a building in downtown, the first thing I talk about is the Historic Review Board, right? So they know you need to get with them about any changes and all the rules they have. And then I spoke about the HDRC and what they did and the money that city council put into that so we could get that study done, so that was already explained to them that we did that study. And they are, them, HDRC, City of London, the 1811 group are all working towards that goal of becoming a Main Street, right? The certification as Main Street Ohio, or Main Street USA or whatever they call that distinction.
All right. All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, on to our old business. We have our table item, just one now. Ordinance 15122, and that was sponsored by Rich Hayes and that is going to remain one there, okay? We do not have any new business this evening. Onto our old business for the fourth reading. Ordinance 11823, sponsored by, a motion to read by title or number, sorry about that.
So moved.
Second. Yes.
Public hearing on this. Oh, that's on 316.
Yeah, that's going to be on 316. So ordinance 11823 sponsored by John Stahl, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission for the Preliminary Development Plan.
This is on the Kennedy Station Apartments and there'll be a public hearing on 316 the next meeting.
All right. On for our second reading, Resolution 13023, a motion to read by title or number.
Make a motion to read by title or number.
Second.
Okay. Resolution 13023 sponsored by Andrew Hitt, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission for a preliminary development plan.
So this is Lexington Green Housing Development Area between Eagleton and Kenny Boulevard extending out to 38. It's already been approved by the Planning Commission, but it comes by council also for passage or non-passage.
Right.
Recommendations. And there's a public hearing April 6th.
That is correct. All right. Any questions on 130? All right. Onto ordinance, second reading, ordinance 13123, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance 13123 sponsored by John Stahl, an ordinance amending official zoning map.
This is for the Lincoln Avenue section, they want to give from a business to a P1, I forget which, I forget what it is, they want change in all sorts, it's all one thing. There used to be a business, a grocery there. And there's a public hearing on that on April 6th also.
That's correct. All right. Any questions on 130123? All right, thank you. Onto our roundtable, we'll begin with Mr. Eads.
Listening to the mayor's discussion a few minutes ago, made me think that as a member of the Lions Club, we just had some people come to our last meeting regarding the mural project that they're trying to get put in place or they've started on. This will be the building between the tracks, the old building there that runs from Maple Street out. And they've got 13 large panels there that were windows and they are going to have a mural for each one of those. Big painting that they're looking for donations, they're looking to partner with people. Maybe we as city councils should consider making a donation to that too. That kind of plays into the fact that I think that the Friends of Madison County Parks and Trails, they talked and also the biking, if that's not the same people, but I think it is. They also talked about wanting to become Bike Town USA and trying to make London a little bit more friendly to bikers. This will be a focal point for our city. It's not going to be easily seen, but those people that'll come in and want to ride that bike trail, I think they're going to remember this. If you think of Circleville and the murals they have or Mount Victory and the murals, I mean, this won't be downtown, I'd love to see murals downtown too, but this is going to be a neat thing. I don't know that I think that the first mural needs to be there, which was the woolly mammoth, because that was the history of this place 10,000 years ago, but that's, that's up to them to do that. But he made me think of that when he brought that up. I do know that if you would like to make a donation to that personally, you can do that by sending that to the Friends of Madison County's Park and Trail and marking donation for the mural project. Again, the second thing that was brought up was about the trains. I've had a few discussions about this also. I'm glad that the mayor and the police chief and everyone's working together, the fire chiefs working together on this, trying to figure out, you know, how fast these trains are going. I would suggest that before we jump into anything, because I think there are two sides to this, that maybe we get someone either from Norfolk Southern or even RJ Corman, they've got a location out here. They handle train wrecks all of the time. They would probably have experts there that could come, speak to someone and say, this is what we have found before you decide or don't decide to do this or not to do that. I would just suggest that one of those groups or both of those groups get contacted also. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Peters?
All I have is, again, finance meeting Monday, March 6th, 6:00 PM.
All right, thank you. Mr. Robinson?
I don't have much either, just public services, April 5th, 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, appreciate you being here. Safety service meeting will be on Tuesday, the 14th at 5 o'clock in the conference room. You know, I always say at the end of every meeting, you know, I just ask the Lord to watch over us, keep us safe and keep us well. We had some tornado warnings the other day, we had one fairly close to us and down Jeffersonville was cited. Some. Phantom cloud action. And so we didn't get anything, so thank the Lord for that. I want to thank you guys. Glad we're getting ready to work on this railroad thing. This has been the center of attention for the whole country, really. And those poor people are going through hell over there and our federal government's not doing a whole lot for them. So we will work on this diligently and see what we can come up with and try to keep our citizens safe and our city safe. We don't need a catastrophe like that. I think that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hitt?
I'd like to thank everyone who's here showing an interest in the city. And I guess something that's impressed me is the demolition of the area over here, how quickly that happened. It's kind of different to see that space all open, but it got all cleared out and very quickly, so that's, that's good. That's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stahl?
With open, I had the groundbreaking for that new Honda plant just 20 miles from us. So I'm glad we passed all the things we did the last meeting. It's going to help tremendous, so maybe we'll get a lot of development out of that, I hope. And also thank everybody for showing up. And also, with the mayor's talking about the train stuff, we've had a lot of stoppages out by Maple Street. We could go Sunday, it was about over 12 hours and then another day, and that's our main route down through there. So I don't know what happened, but it seems like there's been a lot of breakdowns lately. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. And also, I received some information in the mail and I wanted to verify it with our auditor and it was regarding salaries for firefighters. And some of the numbers on here, I'm not sure, I would recommend that this, just go to finance just so they can have a further discussion on these, on these numbers with the auditor. She'll be in attendance there, showing, you know, like one firefighter is showing salaries, 2022, $122,000. Another one, $118,000, another one, $106,000, another one, $90,000, that seems kind of normal. And then another one, $104,000. It's just really high numbers because it also shows their regular pay. The regular pay of one is $80,000, but it ended up being $122,000, $42,000 of overtime, so. And then another one, $84,000, $34,000 of overtime. So, and I received that in the mail, you know, I just wanted to verify those numbers. So I did receive these numbers from our auditor. So if we could take those to finance department, I think that, committee, I think that would be good to discuss those and there just get some clarification on those numbers. be good to discuss those and there just get some clarification on those numbers for the community. Like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, thank everyone for being interested in our local city government. It's, you know, it's huge, we're here to, to do this for the whole community, so thank you everyone for coming out. Like a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.